Hello, I'm Jack Lynn Housel, a member of the League of Women Voters of the Greater Dayton Area. I am here today with candidates running for the Xenia City School Board. The candidates are Joshua Day, Mary Greck, George Leightonheimer, Jennifer Marietta, Tyler Scott, Cedric Tolbert, and Deborah Williams. George Leightonheimer, Tyler Scott, and Cedric Tolbert were not able to join us due to prior commitments. We're going to start our interviews by giving candidates one minute to tell us about themselves and why they want to serve on the Xenia School Board. I'm going to start with you, Joshua Day.
Awesome. Thank you, and thank you to the League of Women Voters for putting this on. As you said, my name is Joshua Day. I am an aerospace engineer with a got my bachelor's at Embry-Riddle Aeronautical University and my master's degree at Auburn. And I worked for about eight years as a civil servant, working for the Air Force, doing flight testing out in California, and then now in Ohio. That's how I got to Ohio. And I now work for GE. We're doing hypersonic flight testing, and I run several multimillion-dollar programs, tracking and making sure that we stay on time and on budget, and the technical aspects, and that we have successful flight tests. I've also been on the board for the past four years. I ran back in 2021 when my oldest was just starting school. And I'm excited to stay on, try to stay on the board.
Thank you, Joshua. The next candidate up is Mary Greck. And what we'd like you to do is to tell us a little bit more about yourself and why they want, why you want to serve on the Xenia City School Board.
Thank you for this opportunity. Thank you for the League of Women Voters for providing this opportunity. I am a wife and a mother. I have three grown daughters. I have, I am an occupational therapist with, since 1991. I worked in the school system till the, until after the 2021 school year, I retired. At that time, I still really, I kept my license and I kept my private practice, but I still really needed, I don't know, I just really needed to be, again, in the schools somehow. And so I ran for school board. I did win. I've been on for the last four years. And my focus has mostly been to really try and understand school funding, because it is so unnecessarily complex. And I've spent a lot of time and pretty much any opportunity that I've had to be able to understand and take any kind of courses on school funding. And so I really would like to use that knowledge that I have gained and stay on the board for at least another four years.
Well, thank you very much. The next candidate is Jennifer Marietta. Please tell us a little bit about yourself and why you'd like to serve on the city school board.
Thank you. I'd be happy to. My name is Jennifer Marietta. I live here in Xenia. I have been a community member in Xenia for most of my life. I've raised two children in the district who grew up in public education, and they did very, very well. My son has special needs, and he was able to receive intervention services throughout his experience at school also. So, public education is very near and dear to my heart. I previously served on the board from 2017 to 2021. What I really liked about my time on the board then was that there were a lot of diverse viewpoints, which represent the diversity that we have in our community. I think it's really important that the board have different viewpoints so that they can have those robust discussions that they need to have about what's going on with our kids and our families. The people that work in our schools, our teachers, our support staff, they're our friends and neighbors. It's a little troubling right now that I keep hearing a lot of insults and sort of attacks on what's going on in our schools. And it's hard for me to swallow, because again, these are our friends and our neighbors. These are good people who are doing their best to serve our children and our families. And so what I'd like to do is use my dedication to service and my dedication to supporting our community and listening to our community, and just get back on the board and get those conversations going.
Deborah Williams, could you tell us a little bit about yourself and why you want to serve on the Xenia City School Board?
I have been a resident of Xenia City my entire life. I graduated from Xenia Schools. I now work, I have worked 40-plus years with children and recently started a childcare facility and preschool. And I realized the importance of good school system to a community. And that's why, as a property owner and a business owner, I feel like I need to contribute and to give back.
Okay, thank you very much. Now I'm going to be asking each candidate the same questions. We have three questions. You will have two minutes to speak to each question, and then I'll move on to the next candidate and give them two minutes to respond. So the first question, and this is going to be directed to Mary Greck, as a school board member, how will you address parents' concerns?
How it works in the Xenia Community Schools is that each, parents send us emails, they stop us on the streets. I'm a small business owner actually in Xenia, and so I, I have contact with the community a lot. And last year, I was school board president. This year, I am not. The school board president in Xenia is the person that speaks for the board. So when parents stop me, send me an email, however, I will immediately acknowledge their concern, whatever it is they're saying. Then I go ahead and make sure that the current board president, which is George Leightonheimer, has that information. And if I can do any research to help him with that, I definitely will do that. He is the one then that needs to provide the resolution, shall I say. But that doesn't mean that we still can't speak with these people, commiserate with them, listen to them. And so it looks, I think, maybe a little different than maybe some other districts, but that is how we handle it in senior community schools.
Thank you very much. Now we're going to be going to Jennifer Marietta. As a school board member, how will you address parents' concerns?
Thank you. So I think the first thing that you need to do anytime you're receiving a concern from a parent or caregiver, because here in our community, a number of our children are not being raised by parents, is to listen. You need to listen to what it is that they are sharing. It's important that people are heard. They might have a lot of information and a lot of things that you might not think are important, but they're important to them. And so everyone deserves to be heard. So, once I've gathered that information and I've listened to that concern fully, get an understanding of everyone who's involved, I would then follow up with the superintendent and refer it to him so that he can do a more thorough investigation and follow up with the parent to make sure he understands. And then, while it is the superintendent's job to follow up on that and work toward a resolution, it's my job as a board member to also follow up and make sure that gets done. So I would check in with the superintendent after the fact, find out what the resolution was, make sure that the parent received that follow-up contact. And if there's anything I can do to support that process, I'd be happy to do that, too.
Oh, thank you very much. And then finally, Joshua Day, as a school board member, how will you address parents' concerns?
Yes. So I will continue to do what, what I've always done, which is be accountable and reachable, most importantly, as a board member and as a leader in the community. I think it's important to be available to the community so that they understand that I'm not, you know, just some, some face or some name, but somebody they can actually reach out to and expect results from. So I respond directly to, to their questions, to their concerns, listen, listen to them with respect and care and understanding. I believe it's important to lead, lead with a heart and model the values that we want for our kids, to make sure that every parent knows that their voice matters and that there's somebody there that, that cares about them, cares about their kid, and is there to help them. I think it's important that families see that they have a school board member who's engaged and approachable and is committed to serving them with, with integrity, and somebody who they can, they and their, their kids can look up to. I volunteer a lot within the community and within the schools. My wife volunteers at the schools. My, three of my four kids are currently attending the schools, and we got a fourth one on the way that'll be in the schools soon. So, you know, we try to be very active and available and open and let the people know that, that they can always reach us, that they're going to be heard and cared for.
As a school board member, how will you address parent concerns? Deborah Williams.
I address parent concerns almost every day in the business that I'm in. But in that business, it, I deal with children who are going to the public school system. And I've been approached a lot lately about some of the issues that are arising. I feel like we have a decent school system, but I feel like there is probably, parents do not feel heard a lot, and I'm sure that's not uncommon. But I feel like in my dealing with parents so often, that I have good communication with them, and, and feel like I would have a lot to contribute.
Well, thank you very much. Now we're going to move on to the second question, and we're going to start with Jennifer Marietta this time. And the question is, what do you see is the most important issues facing your school district?
That is a really great question. There are a number of things that I think are our issues right now. One of the first, I think, and most important things is that there is this weird sort of, I don't know if it's media-driven sort of attack, this idea that our schools are being indoctrinated and that these books that are being given to children are somehow warping their minds, or that our curriculum is, is teaching diversity and equity and inclusion in the wrong way. And I, I find those attacks to be very, very frustrating, because a lot of it comes from like misinformation and just untruths. And if you actually took the time to look through our curriculum, get to know our teachers and get to know our staff, you would know that these are just, like I said before, these are our friends and neighbors doing the good work to educate our kids. So I feel like a lot of the things that have been coming up lately, lately are red herrings, like CRT and DEI and this movement to ban books. Like, I think these are all things that are not actual issues that are affecting our schools, but are being made into issues and distracting us from being able to do the real work. What does matter in Xenia Schools is student achievement. We have not been able to close the gaps as well as we would like to, or improve test scores on like the state report cards. So that's very important that we move up our student achievement scores and we strategize on that. The other thing that I think is critical right now is the movement to fund more vouchers and pull money away from public education. Public education is for everyone. There are quality standards with the federal government. There are safeguards for our students with special needs. If that money is pulled away from public school districts and they can't provide those services, and that money is going to charter schools and other private organizations, they may not be held to the same standards. So I think school funding needs to be continuously addressed and fought for, as well as just making sure that our teachers and staff have what they need to do, do the good work and help our kids improve.
Oh, thank you. Now we're going to move on to Joshua Day. What do you see is the most important issues facing your school district?
Yeah. To me, there's two really important issues that, that we're facing. One is financial, and the, the second is academics. Financially, you know, we've had, heard a lot about the, the property taxes and possible changes in property taxes, and we need to seriously prepare for the eventual change that, that we can see there, and, and make smart decisions to alleviate the tax burden on our community, and be open and clear about what the community's taxes are being used for, so that they feel comfortable continuing to, to support the schools, and that we can make those decisions while also continuing to provide an excellent education. Academically, I think we have to implement our new strategic plan that we put together over the last year and, and some change, and continue to improve. We, in, in the past four years, we've seriously closed a lot of the gaps that, that we had seen. Post-COVID, there were a lot of concerns and issues with the students, but we are back on track. If you look at the state report cards in the past, the past year, we've reached or exceeded where we were pre-COVID, which I think is excellent results, and something that we need to continue to strive for. One of the things that I'm trying to push is that we get back to the basics of education, back to pencil and paperwork. We found that the excessive use of technology has actually been detrimental to our young learners. And we need to use technology with specific purposes in mind and, and get back to what we know as standards of education, and make those connections for the students and help them learn in, in the best way possible.
Now we're going to Deborah Williams. What do you see is the most important issues facing your school district?
One of the things is probably transparency with the parents. I've heard a lot of things that they, they don't feel like they're heard. They don't feel like their concerns are taken seriously. And our, I have recently found out that our graduation rates are not the best, and that our state test scores for our upper grades leave a little bit to be desired. And I'd like to, I feel like we need to work with our community more to see those things change.
Oh, thank you very much. And then, and finally, we have Mary Greck. What do you see is the most important issues facing your school district?
Thank you. Yes. The most important issues that I see facing senior community schools at this time are, first off, staff and student attendance, because if you're not in school, you're, you're not learning. We have, we have instituted, in the, in the four years that I've been on the board, we've instituted some measures, and, and we are following and tracking now for staff and student attendance. So that's the start, but now we need to make sure that that is, that we're seeing the results of these measures that we have started. Next, again, which goes right along with that then, is actually the schools, you know, the test scores, and particularly functional math and reading scores. They, you know, we saw the COVID slide. We are catching up, and so we need to make sure, we have a new curriculum, actually, and that has been instituted. The teachers have been trained. We need to make sure that we are using that curriculum with fidelity. And I know, again, there are, we are taking steps to do that, but we need to make sure, as a board, that we are following through and, and making sure that that is actually continuing. Lastly, and maybe most importantly, is the, the financial component, because that is topmost on everyone's mind. Funding, school funding, particularly for public schools, is, as I said before, very complex, but it is something that we, as a board, need to take seriously. We need to do our homework, and we need to make sure that we understand what, what's working and what is not, which is why we need to be very concerned about what's going on in Columbus, paying, paying attention to the biennial budget, making sure that what, that public schools are getting the funding that they should be getting. And then lastly, I personally would like, in my next four years, to make sure that student nutrition and health is continued. We, we've been looking at that, but I want to make sure that that is another component that we should be looking at and following through on as a board.
Okay, thank you very much. Now we have a third and final question, and we're going to return to Joshua Day to answer first. And that is, what policies and practices should the school board adopt to address bullying in schools?
Awesome. Thank you. Yeah, so we, as a board, have many policies in, in place to address bullying in, in our schools. You know, and, and they, they span a wide range of, of actions, of student responsibilities and teacher responsibilities, of how kids should behave in the classroom. And in my viewpoint, the, the schools, you know, we have to do our best to provide the teachers with the tools and the staff with the tools to, to act and to regulate and to assist the, the students, whether that's behavioral or whether that's using assistance from our, our therapists, our occupational therapists, our, our outside resources to help students, especially in our community where our students have lots of extra needs and, and they, and they need the help. One of the things that I'm working on to try to help is some, is by providing behavioral field trips to, to the school, to the, to the kids, and give them an opportunity to experience culture outside of our community, culture in the world. And, you know, nobody misses a field trip day. So, you know, kids will, kids have something to look forward to, something to strive for, to improve their own behaviors and academics, and then be rewarded with great experiences and, and growth.
Oh, thank you very much. Now we're going to move on to Mary Greck. What policies and practices should the school board adopt to address bullying in schools?
Yes, thank you. Bullying in schools continues to be a problem, despite the fact that in, in the Xenia Schools, we have a whole tiered system of supports, including multi-tiered, it's called MTSS. There's a whole alphabet soup of, of abbreviations. But we just recently got a update from the staff that is responsible for that, tracking that system and in that, enacting all of those supports. It, the system is in place, the, the staff is using it. The, according to the report that we got, it is working, although it, there's always room for, for improvement with that. As far as the board goes, we, as a board, need to make sure that we are providing the resources, which may include money, it may include different therapy staff, nursing staff, teaching, teachers in services. I know in Xenia, in fact, we have provided opportunities for parents to, for parent learning on how to deal with difficult students. So there is a lot in place. As a board, we just need to keep checking in and making sure that those supports and that whole system is, A, working, and that there's data to show that it's working, and B, that if there is, that the areas that are falling down, then need to be either financed or whatever needs to happen with that, as far as personnel, like I said, personnel finances, what, what needs to happen.
Thank you. And now we're going to Jennifer Marietta. What policies and practices should the school board adopt to address bullying in our schools?
Ooh, I'm going to try real hard to keep to my time on this one. So bullying is a very complex issue. And to understand bullying, you have to understand the children that live in Xenia. So bullying is not as simple as like one kid was being mean to another kid on a certain day. We have a lot of kids that are coming from different households where there might be trauma, there might be substance abuse, there might be, you know, caregivers that are incarcerated. There's just a lot of different things that are going on with our kids. I'm a criminal defense attorney, and so I see a lot of this stuff. And so understanding where our children are coming from is important. You can't just look at the behavior and just call it a day. You have to know more. You have to learn more, which is why I think zero tolerance policies don't work, because they're not holistic enough. You don't really get a good understanding of what's going on. And I know that when I was on the board, Xenia did not have a zero tolerance policy. I remember we discussed that at length. Xenia does use a PBIS program, which is a positive behavior enforcement program. That goes pretty well overall. I do think it might be worth exploring to just try out maybe peer mediation, or when, go to the Capitol Conference and explore some of the other programs and other things that school districts are doing that work, because we can all learn from each other. We ask a lot of our teachers already. So any support that we can give them to handle these classroom issues is very important. We need to break tattling culture. Like, tattling culture needs to go away. Like, we can't have teachers telling kids like, oh, you're just tattling, go sit down. We need to actually deal with problems. And to do that, we need to have supports and programs and protocols for that. The other thing I would say is that we have to always remember to consider the intersection of special education, as well as socio-emotional health with all of these kids. We have certain requirements under federal law, like MFS determination hearings, to make sure that a kid's behavior is not a result of some other identified need, and making sure that we're dealing with it appropriately based on each child's needs. But again, listening, listening is critical. We got to know what's going on with parents. We got to know what's going on with kids. But I think we, as a board, can support holistic programming to help everyone.
Deborah Williams, what policies and practices should the school board adopt to address bullying in schools?
Oh, my goodness. Part of my thing with bullying is I think it's almost a societal thing now. So we kind of have to address it as a whole, where, like I said, that brings in the family again, of making sure that they're not emulating others that they see. And we have to take it seriously. It's a, it's a huge emotional problem for children that they'll carry. And I feel like that we need to, again, bring the community, involve our, our community centers, our places of faith, our, our city officials and things, to see what we can do to address that, starting in the younger age group. I, we see it even in, I have a grandson in the first grade, and you see it even in the first grade. So I feel like the sooner that we address it, the earlier in age, the better chance of success we have.
Okay, thank you very much. In closing, we'd like to provide each candidate with a minute for a closing statement. And for that, we're going to start with Mary Greck.
Again, thank you for this really important opportunity to reach voters so that they know and hear what each of us stands for. I personally would love to, to serve another four years on the board. I currently, as I said earlier, really want, I really care about the students. I really want to be able to make a difference in their lives, not only the students, the parents, the teachers, staff, and administration. The, to that end, I have spent the last four years volunteering in the schools. Even if I don't win, I will continue to do that, especially as an OT. I, I see what happened during COVID. I have been able to in-service preschool through kindergarten and first grade teachers on getting back to basics and using handwriting and using motor skills and using listening and to, to really get the students back to being able to be ready to learn, because that's part of it. That's one of the big things that happened in COVID, was that they weren't ready to learn. So I'm really hoping that I can get one more four years to do that. Thank you.
Thank you. And thank you. And now we're going to go to Jennifer Marietta for her closing statement.
All right. So I think it's important to know that as a board member, you set the tone for the district. You set the policy and you set the vision for what the people in our community and our schools see. That applies to our teachers, our support staff, and it doesn't run without support staff at all, and our families and our children. And so you have to present yourself in such a way that the focus is on service and the focus is on education. And when I was on the board before, that is what I did. That is actually what I still do. You can find me attending, volunteering, and participating in all kinds of different school functions. I also go to all the board meetings, and I speak when there's something important to talk about. So I think a board member has to be prepared to be a leader, to be an example, and to fight for what's right. One of the things I'm hoping to do on the board is to provide some different perspectives. I think you need to have those different points of view. You can't have one board member that is bringing up things that are distracting to what the board needs to focus on. That person will need to be checked, and that person will need to be told that we need to focus on more important things. And I think that that And I think that that diversity of thought is important because if everyone's kind of thinking along the same lines, then we can't move forward. We're just stuck having arguments that waste time and that doesn't help anyone.
Thank you.
Oh, sorry.
Very much. Thank you very much. Now we're going to move to Joshua Day. Please, um, could you provide a closing statement?
Yes, um, so for the past four years on the board, two of which I served as president, I've, uh, stood strong for the kids in our community. And I've, uh, worked hard to, uh, help get things going. We dedicated this new state-of-the-art middle school, we revamped our stadium. We've instituted a new strategic plan for the future. I've championed, uh, our, our kids, ensured that the right things are being taught and, and how they're being taught. As an aerospace engineer, I've managed million-dollar programs. I bring expertise in the STEM field and budgets and leadership. And I'm committed to accountability, supporting our teachers, keeping our classrooms focused on learning and giving every child in Xenia the education they deserve. So I'm, uh, hopeful for, uh, support on November 4th and, uh, for another term on the school board.
Deborah Williams, you will have one minute for a closing statement.
Thank you. I, number one, I appreciate the opportunity you've given me. This is all new to me, not my community, but the, um, running for politics. And I appreciate the opportunity. People have asked me why I want to run and I said, I appreciate the opportunity, but my motivation is running, in, in running is, um, seeing that families are satisfied with our school system, that they're heard. And as a school board, our job is to oversee the superintendent and the things that affect these families. I've always said, children, it's not just children. Those children are attached to a family and we need to address all of those concerns. And at least be available. We may not be able to solve all of their problems, but I want to be available to do the best that I can in addressing them.
Thank you. And, uh, thank all of you for your participation today and good luck with your campaigns. The League of Women Voters encourages all candidates to run an issues-oriented campaign. Our goal is to educate the voting public and strengthen our elective political process. The annual voter's guide will be distributed beginning the first week of October in the Dayton Daily News, AIM Media, suburban newspapers and at local libraries, schools and businesses. The last day to register for the general election is October 6th. And early voting begins on October 7th at your board of elections or you can always request an absentee ballot. However you decide to vote, your opinion matters very much and helps us make our democracy work. Thank you.